This conference will now be recorded.
And then Jerry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. Are we ready, Casey?
Yep, we're live.
And Chrissy, can you bring up the agenda? All right. It is Monday, 7/13/2020, 3:02 PM. And I will call when we can count the commissioners to order. So we'll remind people to mute their phone if they're not talking. There we go. Thank you. First of all, we did a sound check actually before we called the meeting to order, and we were able to hear everybody. As far as a roll call, I see Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Hunt both here in attendance. So we have all three commissioners here in establishment of a quorum. First step is adoption of the consent calendar. Chrissy, if you could scroll a little bit. These are items of a routine nature that either commissioners or staff can pull for further discussion. Otherwise, it will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented. Just maybe one thing that we could highlight, and I'm sure others are more versed on this than I, but I... H4 cooperative agreement for wildlife services work. Is this indeed our annual funding to support the position?
I'm having audio problems here, but I'll second the motion. Sorry.
Okay. We had a motion to second, but I think we had a question. If you may, can clarify?
I can. This is, yes, our annual agreement. Commissioner Hall, this is our annual agreement.
Great. So I know there was a, we had a, at least the board, I believe, had a few calls of contact concerned that we were going to continue our annual support for this position, and indeed, we are. And I just hope that people will be aware of that.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Right next, under reports, we have a Lincoln County Public Health COVID-19 update presented by Rebecca Austin. Now, I see Nicole Fields here as well, so I'm not sure which one of you is doing the update, but I'll let one of you, whoever that is, take it away.
I think Nicole's gonna start out, and then I'll fill in. Yeah.
Perfect. So I will start by giving you all a quick numbers update that in the state of Oregon, there are 12,438 school cases of COVID-19. In Lincoln County, we have 361 confirmed cases. We also have had seven deaths from COVID-19, and we have had 5,124 negative tests. So just a couple of things that I'm gonna touch on real quickly is that the governor today has did a press conference and announced that the face covering requirement is being expanded to apply to outdoor public spaces as well when physical distance cannot be maintained. So this is, you know, we're seeing like barbecues, parks, the gatherings, anything like that. When you're outside, you can't maintain that distance. You would need a face covering. And then in addition to the new face covering requirement, they are now limiting the indoor social gatherings to 10 people or less. So we're kind of going back to some of the things that we started with. I'm getting a lot of feedback. I'm not sure if everyone else is hearing that or not, but I'm just gonna kind of power through it. A couple of other things of note that came out through the weekly report, which Oregon Health Authority releases every week on Wednesday that are just kind of of interest and things to be aware of, is that we are really spiking across the state in our younger demographic. So half of all the cases in Oregon right now are from people under the age of 40, and a third of them are under the age of 30. So that is kind of a surprising demographic. When this first started kind of hitting our state, a lot of the older residents were the ones that were getting sick and really having some negative outcomes. And now we're seeing folks in their 20s and 30s getting COVID-19 quite frequently in our state. And so that's just something to be aware of. We have also had a spike in community acquired cases across the state. So that means that we don't know where people are getting COVID-19 from. We aren't able to directly link it to cases in a lot of these instances. So it could be, you know, some social gatherings, more things are open. And so the community spread piece is a really big deal because in order to control the spread of COVID-19, we need to know where people are getting it from. So that's quite a big deal. And two pieces of data that I think are really, really important as we figure out how to continue our response here. A couple other data points that I thought were interesting is that we reported in the state of Oregon more cases in the past week than in the entire month of May. So the state is going the wrong direction, and we are getting a lot more cases of COVID-19. And the last time we had less than 100 cases in a single day was more than a month ago. So you can see that that number is spiking, and we're trending. That's not just, you know, some outliers in data. That's the trend where we're growing in cases. One of our communicable disease nurses, Kathy, and one of our environmental health specialists, Helen, put this case study together. And Susan was kind enough to get it put together electronically for us. But what this really shows is an initial group of four people who tested positive for COVID-19 and how it spread amongst their contacts like wildfire. You can see that, you know, these cases are, if they live in a home with someone, well, now that person has COVID-19. If they saw a friend or a relative, that person has COVID-19. And it kind of goes out to their workplaces and their siblings and their families. So we just thought this was a really nice visual to represent how this spreads so easily and so quickly and how it can impact the community so seriously, even starting with just four people. Because if you see around the outside, there's 39 additional cases from workout breaks. So these are workplaces and businesses within our community that are getting cases of COVID-19 from such a small core group of initial positives. So we thought this was an interesting visual, and I will turn it over to Rebecca to add on some of her thoughts.
Nicole, I have a question about the graphic. Is this an actual case, or is this, you know, sort of just an example?
This is an actual case in Lincoln County. This is mapping around some of our cases.
Could I ask a question about the graphic as well? Is it available, or is it to be available anywhere on our website or social media pages? Because I think this is pretty powerful, and for people who are visual learners especially, that they might look at it and say, oh, wow.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually, Susan just finished this a couple hours ago today. So as soon as we kind of were debuting it here, and then I think we'll be pushing it out onto our social media and website. Because I agree with you, I think it's a really strong visual.
Thank you.
Okay, Rebecca, take it away. Nope, can't hear you, Rebecca.
So thanks, Nicole, sorry about that, for doing the count part of my presentation. Usually, I do the three Cs, the counts, the concerns, and the community. So we've got the counts down and some more about the data. Some of my concerns that, of course, Nicole already did touch on one, which is the spiking that's going on across the state and especially among the younger demographic, which we know is a harder group to maintain the rules that we now need to live by. And the other concern kind of goes with this. It's that testing is becoming very unreliable again. So we're kind of going backwards in that field as well as the spiking. So it's not looking good. It's important to note that the testing, there's a couple different things that are going on with the testing right now. One is the supply chain, and we have to remember that this is a national supply chain. So we don't have much control over it in Lincoln County or in Oregon. And when there's other states in the country that are spiking worse than we are, all the resources are going to those states. So that is why, even though we're spiking, we're not nearly as in bad a shape as, say, Texas, California, Arizona, and Florida are. So the resources are going to those states, and we are coming up short. And then on top of that, we have a backlog in our laboratories. And no one seems to be really clear why that is, except for we keep testing more and more people. And you know, across the state, we had this big push to test all the staff and all the residents in long-term care facilities. And I think that began kind of our spiral down. So I know that the people in Samaritan and our state public health lab are just going out of their way to try to find other resources that can help us. And I know that Samaritan is working with the Willamette Valley Lab now in Corvallis, and they're just trying to get up to speed so they can get back to their... Remember, they used to have results back within 48 hours. So we're trying to get back to that. Just working up the kinks. Whenever you're working with a new lab, it takes a while. So it's quite frustrating, though, that we do seem to be going backwards on a couple of these things. And then as far as the... So I just want to say that there's this, this kind of goes into the community, too. We are, we have fewer and fewer resources at our fingertips now to mitigate the spread of this disease. Because it used to be that we were going to test everybody that we could. We're gonna contact trace everybody that we could, and we're gonna isolate everybody, right? That was our plan back in the spring. And we slowly got up there, and we slowly got things in place. And now we're seeing this problem with testing. So testing now seems to be falling away slightly. And so what do we have left to mitigate this spread? What we have left is wearing face coverings, keeping six feet distance, and washing your hands. That is all we have. And I know the community is pulling their hair out, as are all of us, with the fact that we have a lot of people still not abiding by those mitigation tools that we have, which don't seem like very much right now, but that's all we got. So I'm hearing people concerned in the community, like, why aren't people wearing face masks when they go into stores? They see employees stare without face masks. And I have to say that we have given out hundreds and thousands of masks to businesses for this very reason. All their staff should be wearing masks all the time. If they cannot wear a mask, they should have a face shield on. If people are coming into their stores and don't have masks, they should be giving them masks or sending them away. I went into a place locally here today, and I saw a sign that says, "No mask, no service." Kudos to them. So that is where we're at now. And everybody has to pitch in to do this. It's been suggested that public health go out into the communities and hand out masks to people that don't have them, which, if we did that, we would not have staff doing the contact tracing, the case investigations, and consulting with all of our workplaces that are in outbreaks. So that's why the whole community has to dig in. When you see somebody without a mask, especially if they're out of state, I know that's a real big wrinkle for everybody. Hand them a mask. So the other thing I wanted to say about the community is that Molly did a report for me. And even though Nicole mentioned that there is a trend of more and more, what they call sporadic or community spread transmission going on across the state, we're still doing pretty good. And the data that Molly gave me went up through the 6th of July. So it's about a week behind. But about 73% of our cases resulted from outbreaks. So that means we know where they got their COVID. And about 13.5% came from sporadic or the community transmission. So we don't know where they got those. So that's kind of where we're sitting. I know the commissioners have been wanting me to give them those numbers, and we finally have had enough of a breather that we've been able to run some of this data. So I hope that's helpful.
Katie, could I ask a question at this point? Because it's kind of a follow-up to something Rebecca just mentioned, if that would be okay? You know, we did have an email exchange, Director Austin, earlier today about the question, and I thought it was relevant because later today, the board will be again looking at whether or not to keep, modify, or drop our 24-hour hold requirement for lodging properties in unincorporated areas. And I think one of the things I know I'm hearing again and again, and I would be really surprised if my board colleagues are not hearing this as well, is, you know, shut down the motels, you know, keep the visitors out. That's the only thing that can be done to protect us. So based on what you said to me in the email, and also what you're saying just now, it sounds like we don't have any clear cases that we can directly say, this person came in, stayed here, and brought the disease with them. But on the other hand, with 13.5 of being a known point of origin, that we can't say definitively that a visitor has not brought it in either. Am I interpreting you correctly?
Right, and I did check with Molly, our CD nurse supervisor, and she said there's no way we would actually get that information. So if a visitor came to visit us and then went back home and ended up being positive, and their county CD nurse called them up and said, "Where have you been in the last couple days?" They could say, "Oh, I was in Newport at such and such a hotel." But it would not mean that that county would then call us and say, "Oh, we have a positive now that was in your hotel." That's very rare. And we have a couple cases where we know this has happened, but it's only because the people that were here actually called our public health department and self-reported that they were here, and somebody in their group was COVID-positive. So the thing that I think the community needs to know is, so the science is telling us two things, right? One is that if somebody is COVID-positive, we need to wait to turn that room around for 24 hours. Just because that's if there's any aerosol. So if people were coughing in that room or sneezing in that room, there could be COVID particles in the air for up to 24 hours. So, but we don't know who is COVID-positive, right? So that's kind of the tricky part. And then what the science is telling us, let's see. Wait, I might have that wrong. So here's what the science is telling us. Aerosol, coronavirus can remain in the air for up to three hours. I'm sorry, for up to three hours. So the 24 hours is before you go into a room, you need to clean it and disinfect it if you're gonna go in before 24 hours. So of course, of the three hours, people have to go in and disinfect it. If you wait for longer than 24 hours, you can go into the room and clean it, and you don't need to disinfect it. So does that make sense?
Yes.
So three hours is how long it will stay aerosol in the air. And the 24 hours is when you have to disinfect. So that's a hard call to make, just like everything in this, right? It's always a hard call to make.
I was scribbling as fast as I could on this, but I just want to make sure I got it right. So the CDC guidelines are that it can stay in aerosol form for three hours, and that if you have a COVID-positive person, which again, would be difficult to know, because not everybody has symptoms, that you would wait 24 hours before going in and disinfecting. Do I have that right?
Yes, you have that right.
Okay.
All right. Yes. And then the other thing that we talked about, Commissioner Hall, was what's going on at Avamir? Would you like me to report to you about that now?
Yes, and could I share just something that the reporter, Quinton Smith of Yahaotz News, he did relay to me a communication from the director at Avamir, where he confirmed the most recent, the two most recent deaths were people in their 90s at the facility with serious underlying medical conditions. He also mentions that they undergo state infection control surveys twice a week. Everything medical that can be done is already being done. No deficiencies have been noted by the inspector, that they're doing regular checks of staff and residents. And so I think the question that Mr. Smith had, and perhaps others might have as well, is, you know, essentially, what role, if any, does county public health have in working with a care facility such as Avamir or others, you know, to help make sure they're doing everything possible to ensure the safety of their remaining residents?
Yeah, that's a good question. Because there's a lot of things that public health is doing in this response that a lot of people aren't aware of. So this is a great opportunity for us to explain that. So again, our CD nurse supervisor, Molly Vance, has a background in long-term care facility work as a nurse. And she is taking the lead on consulting with all of our long-term care facilities. And she has been working especially a lot with the Avamir case manager or nurse manager, Cheryl, I don't, I'm not remembering her last name, who is putting in an enormous amount of effort and work. And so they consult with each other pretty much daily, my suspicion is, at this point. And then there's also a DHS surveyor that's there on a pretty regular basis as well, just assuring that all the protocols that are in place are being followed, which they are. Cheryl is very meticulous about that. And they have actually set up a COVID unit there. So anybody that tests positive goes into that unit, and then only those staff people will work in that COVID unit. So there's no mixing of staff. There's no mixing of patients that are in Avamir. And I think it's pretty clear that the people that are dying, which are now up to five, which is pretty sad, they're very, very sick people for the most part. So I think it's probably safe to say, and I think the last two people that have passed, both tested positive for the coronavirus, but neither of them were symptomatic. So that's kind of an interesting thing. So we don't really know what actually caused them to die because they had so many underlying health problems. But so that's the news I wanted to give you further. So there's a lot of consultation that goes on around preventing the transmission of infection. And Molly and Cheryl are in pretty much constant contact just to, you know, make sure everything is going the way it should be going. And I think, you know, it's safe to say that we all know at this point in long-term care facilities, once coronavirus gets into those facilities, they are extremely vulnerable people in those facilities. And it's very challenging to not have that kind of outcomes that we're having. So that's why it's so important for us to prevent it if we can. But we have to remember that people that work there are going out in the community every day and then coming back into the facility. So, you know, it's just kind of a tough, a tough thing.
Okay, other questions for Rebecca? Commissioner Hunt, do you have any questions for Rebecca or Nicole?
No, I think questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Anything else?
Yeah. Rebecca, could I ask you just for a clarification on something you said? I'm looking at the notes. I was furiously scribbling. And you said, "Testing is becoming unreliable again." And I just want to clarify again that I understood correctly. You're talking in terms of availability of test kits and speed of processing as opposed to something being inherently wrong with the tests themselves. Is that correct?
Good catch, Commissioner Hall.
Okay.
So there is also that issue. So more and more tests are coming out, and there are some tests that are being used in the Samaritan system that has a lower reliability factor to it. So those are coming back to us as indeterminate. So that means that they, yeah, that we can't totally rely on it. So all those tests that they do, that they can turn around pretty quickly, they also do a regular, what they call a PCR test, that gets sent out to a lab so they can confirm whether it's positive or negative. So it's dicey. It's kind of a quick and dirty way to find out if somebody's positive, but they get so many false negatives that we can't rely on it, if that makes sense. So they do a follow-up test that can take longer to get those results back. So there is just, it seems like everything that could go wrong with testing has gone wrong with testing and continues to go wrong.
Thank you.
Oh, Chair Jacobson, I now have a question. Sorry. So Director Austin, just to make sure I understood what you just said. When we get a false negative, the reality is that our positives are probably higher than they're testing at? Or the results are showing?
Yeah. Yes. So when we get, when we actually get a lab result back that says indeterminate. So that means that we have to do more work to find out if that person has symptoms. That would be another indicator that that false negative probably is a positive. So it does, and I was just talking to Dr. Brady and Samaritan about this very thing because it's kind of frustrating for us to get these, be getting these indeterminants. But it is a quick way for them to at least get some positive. So yeah, it's not the best, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, both Rebecca and Nicole. I appreciate it. The other thing I was just gonna add, which was mentioned briefly, but I think today around 11 o'clock, Governor Brown had a press conference and released some additional rules or orders around COVID-19, including 10-person gatherings. And now there's a limit to 10 people for gatherings when you are inside. We have had some email traffic around how this coincides with the order that Lincoln County and some of the cities within Lincoln County already have. It's a little bit different. In fact, it targets inside gatherings, and the one that we passed didn't target inside or outside, but just gatherings in general. But now this 10-person gathering limit for inside spaces will be across the whole county. And then her order also extended face covering, wearing when you're outside and physical distancing is not possible. So I just wanted to add that if people have not, have not seen that press release. All right, moving on. Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Hall, do you have a report to share?
I'm gonna say no.
Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
Not today, thank you.
All right, and I will pass as well. Moving on to decision and action item. We are, it says short-term vacation rental 24-hour lodging hold, but really, it's just our 24-hour lodging hold for both hotels and other types of lodging in the unincorporated parts. So just a little history on this. As both the county and the cities worked together early on in COVID to shut lodging, then when we began to reopen lodging, we had many discussions with cities around how to do that. One of the things that came up in those discussions was basically what was Rebecca saying earlier about the guidance for if you had a suspected positive person to wait 24 hours between having someone enter the room? And because it was difficult to know who was positive, many cities, not all cities, but many cities and also the county and the unincorporated parts, put in this 24-hour hold between rooms before cleaning staff or others could go in. At our last joint meeting, we discussed this. And at that time, we still had some cities that had it in place and others that did not. And then shortly thereafter, Newport also rescinded it. So I think at this point, and Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's just us for the unincorporated parts of Lincoln County and the city of Yahaotz.
Chair Jacobson, that's correct. And that order that we did was adopted on June 19th, 2020, which dealt with this particular restriction as part of our overall regulation of lodging properties. And specifically, what we said there is that we would revisit this within 30 days of that June 19th date, which is why we're back in front of you again today. And I just want to make sure it's clear that this will actually, if you take no further action, will actually lift on July 19th. The city of Yahaotz still has this in place. I've conferred with their city manager, and they are actually taking it up at their... conferred with their city manager and they are actually taking it up at their meeting this week. So they're also considering whether or not to continue this particular requirement.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to give everyone a little, little update on where we had been. So with the context for this discussion, I know we've had, or at least I have had, speaking for myself, a lot of public comment and email traffic about this one, especially from some of our vacation lodging owners, as well as some of the hotels and one of the larger hotels that we have in unincorporated parts. So I guess with that, we'll just kind of open it up for, for discussion. As Wayne said, if we didn't take any further action, this would lift on the 19th of July. So possible action today would be not taking further action and letting it expire, or making some type of extension to extend it for another period of time to review again. At least that's the, that's the options as I see them, Wayne.
I think you also could modify the 24-hour hold if you so desire. Create some different, I think some jurisdictions looked at different timeframes in which to do the hold.
All right, with that, although, although reverse, they always go alphabetical by last name. So all, Commissioner Hunt, comments or questions or thoughts?
Well, I was also furiously taking notes. And I guess I'll start with Director Austin, who indicated we're going backwards. And our focus needs to be on preventing the transmission of the virus. And I think Commissioner Hall said there's clear, there's no clear definitive data, one way or another, as to whether or not the 24-hour lodging hold has, has an impact on the transmission of the virus. And so I kind of look at the question of two, two questions, you know, fairness. Certainly, right now, I believe Council Belmont has said in the past that democracy is messy. And unfortunately, because our county still has the 24-hour hold in place, there are a few, or at least one major property, that's a lodging property that is, believes that the 24-hour hold is detrimental to their, their business because they can't rent the rooms. On the other side of fairness, you've got employees who probably aren't going to complain too loudly about having to clean a room, whether or not a known virus infected person was in the room or not. And so where's the fairness to the employees or the families or the health of our individuals if the hold is, is removed? So I support leaving the 24-hour hold in place. I believe that if nothing else, it certainly doesn't hurt our efforts to prevent the transmission of the virus. I think it certainly may limit the number of rooms that are available, which limits the number of visitors that come to the county, which when we're looking at exponential increases in the virus and we're going backwards and testing is becoming more of a challenge. I think anything we can do to limit the spread of the virus is in the right direction. And therefore, I would support extending the 24-hour hold for another 30-day period to, I believe that would be August, well, technically, probably August 18.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Commissioner Hall?
Well, you know, I think everything set up now has been good, but I would like to put one ask, one concept that, you know, I know a lot of us get copied on the same emails. So I'm assuming you've seen the idea put forward by some lodging operators asking us, well, of course, you know, they would like to see us drop it. They feel there's a matter of fairness, especially when, when the, most of the cities have dropped it, but we've kept it in place. But a potential alternative that some suggested was if we were really intend on keeping it, what if we looked at a 20-hour hold? Now, I talked to a general manager at one very large lodging facility, and he said it wouldn't really do him any good because you don't reserve a specific room for a specific person. You know, maybe they're guaranteed an oceanfront room or a highway view room, but that's it. On the other hand, he said he could see it for vacation rentals, B and Bs, some of the smaller motels that that would give them the time to still not send in cleaners for 20, 20 hours, yet the room cleaned, disinfected, if need be, and ready for another visitor. So, you know, I'm still weighing that in my mind. And I thought I'd at least put it out for discussion to see if either of you wanted to consider that as, as, as another alternative to, to put in the mix.
All right, thanks. And, and I guess where I'm sitting on this is, I actually am in favor of the 24-hour hold as a concept. I feel like many, many of the cases we've had in this county and across the state and beyond have been from asymptomatic people. So it's entirely possible that someone spends a night in a hotel room and does not know that they have it. And may not know they have it until afterwards, or may not ever find out that they have it. Because if you're asymptomatic, you wouldn't necessarily, you know, think to go and to get tested or have, have reason to do that. So I really do like it in concept. And in preventing the spread, what I'm struggling with is now with only the unincorporated parts, through the Board of Commissioners, having this in place in the city of Yaha, if like its effectiveness in preventing spread, but it is relatively little because we just don't have the hotel rooms like Newport and Lincoln City do. And that's when the majority, that's where the majority of our lodging is at. We still have a lot, but majority of lodging is inside cities and specifically those two cities. And so without them having this on the books, I, I don't know that we're getting to the goal with that. And so that, that's just kind of where I'm struggling is that I wish all the cities would still have this. I do feel like that's the right way to go. But without them being on board with this anymore, I'm, I think its effectiveness is kind of lost. So that's, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm struggling with. As far as Commissioners Hall thought on the 20-hour rule, you know, if CDC says 24 hours before you go in when you have a positive, you know, in a room, to me, 20 hours wouldn't buy you much when 24 hours is the, is the CDC recommendation. But then additionally, as, as Wayne had said, other cities have looked at other hour holds, you know, waiting three hours because it stays aerosol formed for three hours. You know, I guess that maybe could make some sense, you know, to, to wait three hours, but, but then you're still potentially going in to a place where, you know, you have it on surfaces and other places. So the 20-hour, I'm not sure how much that buys us in terms of prevention.
Okay. Quick question, if I could. I know Mr. Belmont mentioned the date, but I don't, I guess I didn't write it down. If we do nothing on this, what date does the requirement expire?
30 days. Yeah, 30 days of the date it was adopted, June 19.
So July 19?
Yep.
I don't know. You know, I'm not hearing a real consensus here. I don't know, I'd just be inclined maybe not to take action today and see how, how things go and perhaps, I don't know, take it up again. Well, no, okay, it's one week away, though. Where does the time go? So I guess, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, life comes a blur. So, so either our choices are, since I'm not hearing, you know, is either we extend it, or we let it, or we let it die, or?
Or modify.
Or modify.
And I, and I guess what I'm thinking is I, I, you know, I might be into a modification of, of, you know, three-hour hold. But again, I'm, I'm not super clear what that buys everybody in terms of safety. So, you know, letting it lapse and go out, I'd be okay with. Again, I just don't think that with, with only us and Yaha's doing it, I'm not sure we're reaching that target.
Well, my thoughts are, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to keep it in place. I think it gives us an opportunity to lead by example. And again, if we're trying to prevent the transmission of the virus, even if it only affects one person, that's better than, you know, another person getting sick and potentially another person dying. So I would suggest that if we, we do a 30-day extension of the 24-hour hold, you know, we can look at it in 20 days. We can look at it, you know, in three weeks, 21 days. So, you know, that gives us the ability to at least keep it in place, which I think, it's hard to me to see where keeping it in place is detrimental to slowing the spread of the virus, which is our number one challenge in the county.
Commissioner Hall, thoughts?
Yeah, you know, I definitely, Chair Jacobson, I see your point. How much protection are we providing by only having it in the unincorporated areas? But then I got to say, Commissioner Hunt's right. I mean, we have tried, I think throughout, even when the cities haven't chosen to follow us, we have tried to lead from the standpoint of individual health and safety comes first. And who knows, maybe if we prevent one person from becoming seriously ill and perhaps dying, that, that we haven't done a bad thing. I mean, I know it, it hurts the industry's bottom line, but we have done nothing that hurts public health and safety. And based on, you know, based on our discussion, it very, very well may help. So if Commissioner Hunt wants to make a motion for a one-month extension, I would second that.
All right, I'll move to extend the short-term vacation rental 24-hour hold to, for 30 days to August 18, 2020.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 And I am a nay, but motion does, does carry. All right, moving on to discussion information. Now off the topic of COVID, at least for a minute, this is discussing our 2020, 2021 nonprofit social services grant allocation. I think Christie is maybe starting that discussion for us, or Rain, or Wayne?
I think Christie's got the, actually the information that she can put up on the screen. There it goes. I know it's getting there.
And the, the plan for today is simply just to discuss. You know, there may be questions we need answered or additional information or what have you. And then we would come back likely next week to actually make the allocation. So that's the plan for today. So I think up on the screen is the agencies or organizations, and then the amount requested, and then what the recommendation from our committee was. And just for people watching, they did actually submit a full proposal. They didn't just give us a number. There was a full proposal submitted. This is just sort of a summary of, of the ask and what our committee was recommending. Christie, can you scroll down a little bit so we can see the rest of the document?
Yeah.
I guess one thing I just want to point out, and I had already talked to staff about this, and I think we're waiting for a little bit more information, is this is our social service grant. We have two social service grants, and then is one, and then community and economic development is another one. And so I did have a question about a couple of applicants on here, Salmon Drift Creek Watershed Council, which I haven't looked at their full proposal, but just a question in if they're truly doing social service or if maybe their application fits better in our community economic development grants later. So I know I'm waiting back for some information on that one.
And Commissioners, we'll get back to you on that one. The other one to note is that Salvation Army is included here, and they have been a recipient of funding in the past. Just want to make it clear that what we fund here is their social service, their social service activities, specific, very specific social service activities. And it's not funding for the actual religious portion of their organization.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Hall, questions? Commissioner Hunt?
I have no questions, but I'll make an observation. And that is that this program was originally developed with the idea, belief, and I believe it was effective in that if the county provided money to nonprofit agencies that provide, provided services, social services to individuals in our county, it would result in more money being raised, matched, if you will, in an effort to deliver social services to our citizens. And without naming any particular agencies on this, there are some that I am going to take some time and review the applications to try to understand how the money that they've asked for will be provided to individuals in the county that need social services. So I, it seems to me we're kind of getting, lost our focus, but I'll reserve further comment until next, next time.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to say about this is just a big thank you to our committee who, you know, reviews this, these applications and spends time, not in person, of course, but spends time with the applicants and, and then, you know, spends quite a bit of time deliberating as a group and deciding where to give money. You can see what was asked at the bottom there, about $355,000, and what we actually have to give, which is about 186. So, you know, there's really tough decisions to make there. And I just wanted to thank all of our volunteers on that committee that spend the time to do that and to make these recommendations.
Chair Jacobson, if I might, I'd echo those comments. I chaired this committee for eight years before I became a Commissioner. And one of the things that I always looked forward to was pizza while we did our deliberations, which of course, in the virtual environment didn't happen. But, you know, it, it's an important job. And as you've already said, the people that are willing to take the time to do this certainly appreciate their efforts.
Yeah. So thanks to them. With that, I think we'll go back. And I think that was it for our agenda today, kind of a short meeting. I'll let Christie bring back our agenda here. Yeah, anything else you needed to bring up or discuss, Commissioner Hall? Anything else? No? Okay. Commissioner Hunt, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn. But I will note that Wednesday, July 15, 2020, at 6:00 PM, we have a joint session, virtual joint session with the city of Yaha. This was rescheduled, I think, back from March. And then Monday, July 20, 2020, at 1:00 PM, we have a joint session with the Confederated Tribes of Southwest Indians, also virtual. And then our Monday, July 20, 2020, at 3:00 PM, is our Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting. So three different meetings coming up here in the next week or so. And I think I heard somebody, I don't know if it was Wayne, try to chime in? And I think I heard somebody, I don't know if it was Wayne, try to chime in. No, okay, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Yep, bye-bye.